Regular meeting of the board. Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Neekamp.
Here.
Mr. Kristof.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski.
Here.
Mr. Postage.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Revisions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Kristof.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Next, we have a recommendation to recess into executive session per Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of a regulated individual. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kristof.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes. And we will return to open session. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go to my office.
It did us. Oh, Andy. The two-step will come up while she's in.
...
Remember to make your mics hot again before we go back live.
Okay, we will declare our meeting back in the open at 6:55. And next, I'm asking for a motion to approve board action per higher vice code 3313.66 to affirm the expulsion of Rashim Biles for 20 school days.
So moved.
Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Zloszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Niekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristof?
Yes.
Thank you. And moving on, we have the public library budget hearing. Sorry, Mr. Howard, for your long wait.
Oops, sorry. Excuse me. No, you're fine. So, thank you for your time.
Go ahead. It's okay.
Okay, just checking. I did supply each board member with a current brochure of what's going on at the library this summer, as well as on Thursday, we have a community resource expo where we're bringing in to the WIGWAM many different government, nonprofit, and business organizations that support the community. So we can offer members of the community an opportunity to see what's out there for them. This is a bookmark. That way, help you remember the library. Don't forget the library. So we have a lot of great things going on at the library, and it's always nice to come in front of you all and share what great things we have going on. It is my opinion that we are a extremely fiscally responsible organization. And we strive to be good stewards of taxpayer funds. We, when we are building out our budget each year, we're really looking at what is going to have the most impact with the least amount of effort. And we do that through the services we provide, the online resources that we're providing, the programming that we offer. We, the materials that are offered to the community. I will tell you that we are, I'm happy to say, we're back up to pre-pandemic numbers. Our user visits are back up to pre-pandemic numbers. Our circulation is up to pre-pandemic numbers. And our user, or our visits for our early literacy classes and programs that we offer are actually, we're having more visits per class than we were before the pandemic. And so however, we've really taken a deep look at how we're providing services to the community. And we've always had a focus on early literacy. You know, a lot of people call them storytimes. They're early literacy classes for us. And why are they early literacy classes? Because our early literacy classes, they teach children how to be ready to read for when they hit kindergarten. But they also teach parents how to play with their children in a literate way. And so that's why we call them early literacy classes. Same thing as a storytime. It's just bundled. And it's, we're calling it what it is. That's what we're doing. We have professional librarians that have master's degrees teaching those classes. And so we'll make sure that's out there. And that we are being used. We're spending a lot on capital projects this year and in future years, just because it's a necessity. You all know this, being on the school board. So this year, we are remodeling our programming barn. We are, we have to put in new carpet. We are remodeling the staff workspace to make it more effective and better use of staff time while they're working in there. We're, we have a project that we're going, that we're going to be coming to the board probably in a month or so, where we have to repair the ravine. So the ravine to the south side of the library is starting to erode. Actually, it's not starting. We've known it was starting to erode a few years ago. It's to the point where we have to repair it. And that repair is going to cause us to access the ravine from school property. And so our contractor that we're working with is coming up with a plan. We'll have the school signed agreement here at the next board meeting, the library board meeting. So we'll be working on that. We are replacing part of our parking lot at Main Library this year. All that is very expensive. But it all goes towards public use, because all those things are public use. A couple more things that we're, that I'm very happy to share with you. So we're expanding our branch that's across from North High School. We've leased two sections, two more sections of Sycamore Plaza. And we're almost doubling the size of the branch. It's still a small branch. However, over the three and a half, four years that the branch has been in operation, there are four areas that have been identified that really have come to light. One is, the public has asked for continuously sit-down computers. We haven't been able to offer that because of the size of the branch. We've offered laptops, but they would prefer actual PCs to use. So we're going to be able to bring some computers to that space. The second one is a browsable location. It's a small collection. So the branch has been used as an express library. We, so we're going to be able to triple the size of the collection we have there now and make it a browsable collection.
Meaning people just come in and browse through the books?
Correct. I mean, you can do that now, but the selection isn't great because of the size of the facility. We are going to be able to offer meeting, more meeting space. We'll have a conference room. And then we'll also have a study room with study tables in it. And then the fourth thing is just space in general, space for seating. You know, when, during our busy times, middle of the day, and in the evenings, after school lets out, we don't have an awful lot of room for seating. We have seating, but people don't really want to sit on top of each other. They want to spread out a little bit, be comfortable. And so we'll be able to offer that with the expansion. And we're able to do that on a dime, so to speak. Right now, we're expanding the branch as is where it is. And it'll be, it's a five-year lease. It'll be up to about $100,000 additional operating expense a year. And the retrofit of the new space is about 50,000 total. It'll be a little less than 50,000. That's with new shelving, new materials, furniture. We're going to use some of the furniture that we already have at Main. And so that's exciting for us to expand the branch and offer more services to the northern portion of the community. The other thing, and I'll pass this around, is we've never really truly had an outreach service for Pickerington Public Library. And one of the things we identified during the pandemic is that if we're going to stay relevant in a changing world, we need to really take a close look at our business model and not just wait for people to come to us, which they are now again, which I'm very happy about. But we also need to be able to go to the community. And so we are going to be getting, beginning a new library service called Library on the Go. And this is our vehicle. I'll share that with you all. So Library on the Go will not only go to community events, but will also go to assisted living facilities and to schools. Our outreach, we hired a, we created a new position and hired an outreach specialist that has already started contacting the elementary schools to go and work with them to get books into children's hands. And to us, that's important. Getting books into everybody's hands is important. And so I'm very, very pleased about bringing that service online. All, all we're waiting for is actually for it to be wrapped, the vehicle to be wrapped, and then we'll be able to, it'll be ready to go out into the, out into the community. So we're excited. Finally, I wanted to say that we have our summer reading going on right now. And I dressed up just for you all. So. So.
You got a pen?
As I said, so you have a pen to show you the logo. So in years past, we have always recreated the wheel. And it's bugged me for a long time where we have a new theme. And so we create characters and things around this theme. And we're spending a lot of staff time and money that I feel we shouldn't be, that we could be spending wisely elsewhere. And so so when I sat down with our, our reading initiatives and homework help coordinators, I talked about Violet the Cow on our logo is our, our reading ambassador. When she goes out to the community at community events or comes out at the library, that's who she is. So why don't we create logos? Because we have a summer reading program. And we also have a winter reading program. And those programs are really to support and defend against summer reading loss and winter reading loss. When children aren't going to school, they can fall back on, their families can fall back on the libraries. So they continue reading so they don't fall back in school. That's what our hopes are and what we strive and push for. And so, but this is a way of creating an actual logo that can be used every year. We don't have to spend time recreating the wheel. That's just smart use and being good stewards of taxpayer funds. Now, I will tell you, running the numbers, we are about, our return on investment is about $5. And so what that means in general terms, so for every $1 of taxpayer funds that the, that the Pickerington Public Library spends, we free up $5 to be spent somewhere else in the community. And we do that because we, as a library, we get discounts for all the books that we purchase. We get discounts for all of the electronic resources that anybody in the community can access. The programming that we offered is factored into that. If you go somewhere and go to some type of a program or sign up for a business's class for early literacy for your child, you're probably going to pay money at the library. That's part of your taxes. You get that. You can come for free and experience all of that for free at the library. And so that's all part of our return on investment to the community. And when you're talking about a budget that's 2.7 to 2.9 million dollars a year, $5 per dollar is a lot of money. So, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
I do know my grandchildren have been to some of your things. My daughter takes, takes my, and everything she's been to, she says has been excellent.
Awesome. That's really good to hear. Thank you.
So you're expanding the Sycamore Creek library by twice, three times? What did you say?
Almost two times.
Almost two times.
Yeah, we're almost doubling the size, not two times. We're almost doubling the size.
And that'll be nice for that strip mall, which has struggled, to get a more stable tenant.
Right.
I think everybody will, in, you know, the other merchants will probably appreciate that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Great. You guys do a great job. You always have on a shoestring budget.
Thank you.
Wish our friends downtown would throw some more money at you, but.
Hey, I'll never turn it away.
I know.
But I'll spend it on the community, I guarantee you that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Next, we're to the public participation portion of our meeting. Did we have any requests to speak, Ryan?
I don't.
No? Then we're to the treasurer's report. We've been presented minutes from May 23. Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or revisions?
Can you give us an hour summary on everything?
Well. Mrs. Zilchewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Next, we're presented with the May financial report. Do we have a motion to approve? There was two?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions for Ryan? Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Zilchewski?
Yes.
Next, it still says approval for the public library budget. But the auditor's office has passed legislation indicating that we don't have to accept a tax budget any longer. So that was information only. So I will go on to to donations. We've been presented information from
Thanks, Tony.
our fiscal office regarding donations that have already been made. Any questions? Hearing none. Dr. Briggs, would you like to cover the consent agenda?
Yeah, board members. This evening, under consent agenda items, number one is certificated licensed personnel. We're asking the board to accept the, rescind the letter of resignation from the person as listed in the position. We do have resignation retirements. We're asking the board this evening to accept the letter of resignation from the two individuals. Their building, their assignment and effective date and their reason. Underneath certificated licensed personnel, we also have a contract adjustment for two individuals as listed. Teacher tutor recommendations for this upcoming school year. As you can see, we have three replacement, all of them are replacements. There's one new, three, four, five, five new positions and the rest of them are replacements. The new positions are based on equivalent to enrollment projections. And then 2021 Summer Academy Coordinator, we're asking you to approve the person as listed for the Summer Academy Youth Development Position. Resident educators, we have year one, year two, year three, and year four. We're asking the board to approve them as submitted with their stipend as listed. Board members, that is the certificated licensed personnel section. Is there any questions?
Just a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got the resignation as well as the rescinding the resignation. Did you press that?
That is correct. The one, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but this one was, there was a separate, there was a difference between the dates, between the resignation. So they can continue serve our benefits until the resignation became final. So is that correct, Scott?
Okay, thank you.
That was explained much better than what I could. Any other questions about certificated licensed personnel?
I just want to confirm that the stipends for the resident educator mentors are for last year, the year just ending, 2122. And we typically do it now versus at the start of the year? I like that approach. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Hearing none. Number two, under consent agenda is support personnel. We're asking the board to accept the resignations, a letter of resignations from the individuals as listed. Again, their building, assignment, and effective date and their reason. We have a leave of absence. We're asking the board to approve an unpaid leave of absence for the individual as listed and the effective date. Contract adjustments, we do have some on the agenda this evening. We're asking the board to approve them as submitted. And we have job training recommendations. We're asking the board to approve the job, the job training recommendation for the person as listed at their hourly rate effective June 7 through June 24. On the agenda as well, under support, we have support personnel recommendations. Again, these positions are recommending the board to approve the following individuals for a one-year limited contract for next school year. As you can see, there's three new positions and one replacement. And then the Summer Academy recommendations, we're asking the board to approve them as listed. And that is the support personnel section of the consent agenda items. Is there any questions from board members?
Can I, just to clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
We've had campus security at the high schools, and now we're adding them at the junior highs, right?
Thank you for bringing that up. In fact, that was going to be something I'll discuss under our Plan for Progress this evening as well as. So absolutely. Any other questions from board members? Hearing none. Number three is personnel supplemental contracts. We're asking the board to approve the supplemental contract and stipend recommendations as listed in the building. Their assignment, group, step, and salary. We have stipends on the agenda as well this evening. Ticket seller and tournament workers, we're asking the board to approve them as submitted. And that is the personnel supplemental contracts and stipends position, positions as listed. Is there any questions from board members? Hearing none. We have to approve one through three, if the board would do so at this time.
Do we have a motion to approve? I'll second. Any other questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Zilchewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
And then board members, under number five, we do have one supplemental contract and stipend recommendation that was pulled out for separate consideration. Seem to have the last name as Postage for some reason. So we are asking the board to approve that tonight as submitted. And then we also, under recommendation, to discharge and terminate an employee as listed on the agenda for this evening. That is, is there any questions about the remaining consent agenda items from board members?
Do we have a motion to approve the supplemental contract for Louis Postage?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Zilchewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Abstain.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Then do we have a motion to discharge and terminate the one-year limited contract for Juan Anthony Tony Johnson? Then do we have a motion to discharge and terminate the one-year limited contract for Juan Anthony Tony Johnson, S C E paraprofessional effective June 9th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Next, we have a recommendation to approve special education contracts. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Any questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Next, we've been presented revised job descriptions. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to make sure that Rob and Chris, is it Ward?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll probably get that wrong 100 more times, but review the. Probably tell me to stop talking. Okay. Just to review the job descriptions that'll fall underneath your umbrella once you get on board, which would be, you know, today. Oh, I thought, okay. Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Next, we've been presented a recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the lease purchase of a field lining machine with related equipment and authorizing execution of a lease purchase agreement and related documents in connection therewith.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
We've also been presented a recommendation for a motion approving and authorizing Alfred Inc. for the Student-Based Health Center project based on the exigent existence of an urgent necessity, public exigency.
Very good.
Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions? Ryan, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes. We've also been presented a recommendation to approve an MOU with pediatric associates establishing a school-based health clinic at Tusing Elementary School.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Ryan, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Next, we've been presented with a motion to modify, amend the February 14th, 2022 High School Fees Agenda item. This is actually striking the fees for AP Spanish and Honors French for. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
We've been presented a revised 23 Administrator Handbook. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Hearing none? Nope.
I just, I know. I just know that org chart gives us headaches. Should we pull it out? I mean, because every time we make a change, do we have to re-amend? That's not a word. Do we have to amend the handbook?
No, I, I think it's good to keep, Kathy. That's a great question. I think the problem that Ryan shared today, the formatting is the difficult part of it. But we are constantly updating the org chart. I think there is a place for it in the handbook. It does keep us focused on who reports to who, obviously, and job responsibilities. But it's a note taken that it is a changing document. It's a working document, and that is the reality of it.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would just recommend, I think you're trying to use a piece of software to change it that makes it difficult. There, there is a piece of software in Microsoft called Visio that is just for flow charts.
Okay.
So it would allow you to, to do that probably much easier.
Yep.
And that's the problem, is the formatting.
Yeah.
It takes forever for it to be new squares, new rectangles, but yeah.
Because the original one that I gave you was in Visio.
We'll look into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's only like 98 bucks or something like that an entire year to license it, but you probably get a discount.
Well, there's some open source Visio. It wouldn't have that.
I don't know. It's Microsoft Visio. I know that you can add on to your.
I'm thinking a Prezi. I'm thinking a Prezi, something totally different.
What language is that?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Great. Okay.
We'll noodle with that.
Any other questions?
When you guys talk about the, the Microsoft stuff like that, it doesn't, I don't know if the, if public sector qualifies for it. I know our company and a number of the companies that I do some work for clients and stuff, they've, the, there's grants out there, tech grants, that's from the state of Ohio and you, and literally we took a whole office. Like, it was four hours a day, like one, one, one day a week for four weeks and went into. There were some really good instructors with that, stuff like that, and it got totally refunded dollar for dollar. Did it for Excel, for Office, or for Word, for the full Office suite. We, we moved everything to, to one point, we're moving our whole entire, and it's all getting paid for by the states. I don't know if, if schools qualify, but it might be something to look into for, for Betty could take, you know, to help with that kind of software.
I like free. I like free and refunds.
Any other questions?
Oh, that's right. You guys are Google, not Microsoft.
Not my office.
It says text. I would think you could do it for Google too, but.
Well, but it was a good thing to bring up, Keith, because it wasn't a joke. My office runs Windows. We have Mac machines, but we got a piece of software that allows.
It was really, I mean, we have, and like I said, I recommend to clients now and stuff. So I know of eight or 10 companies myself that have done this and all, all had really good results with it.
And Betty has Office, and that's the key. It is with Betty having Office, we could look into it for sure. Yeah.
Ryan, can you go ahead and call the roll?
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Abstain.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Next, Dr. Briggs, would you like to cover this?
Yeah, board members. Number eight, we have administrator resignations, new administrative contracts, contract renewals, and next year's salary recommendations. The first action we're asking the board to accept is a letter of resignation from the three individuals as listed. One of them is obviously Mr. Seymour. We wish him nothing but the best. Brian has accepted an assistant superintendent's position with Whitehall City Schools. He's going to be their assistant superintendent of innovation, academics and innovation, which is right up his line. So congratulations, Brian. So we're asking the board to accept the other two individuals as listed as well. Under administrator contract, do we need to vote on these separately or can I just, can we go ahead and do them together?
They're all together.
Okay, okay. Thank you for keeping me straight. Administrator contracts, we're asking the board to approve Shelley Sakowsky, a district office data analysis at the end of, at the salary as listed for a two-year contract. I know Ron is excited to have her in his office. And also in attendance tonight, we're asking the board to approve Rob Weinheimer as our chief operating officer, business manager. Rob, most of you probably know, sitting in the back, he worked in our district for Peterman, most recently with Columbus City Schools. We're extremely excited to have someone with his experience joining our administrative team. So we're asking you to approve his two-year contract this evening. Under administrator contract renewal recommendations, you can see we have a list of all the administrators, their assignments and their contract recommendations as listed. We also have the administrative salaries, the new salary amounts effective July 1st through August and August 1st, depending on their position, as listed. And then we have administrative salaries, promotions and transfers for the five individuals as listed, their assignment, their building and their base salary as listed. And that is the administrative resignations, new administrative contracts, contract renewals and salary recommendations for next school year.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I just have one question, Alicia or Chris.
Yeah.
We're adjusting the gifted coordinator to 260 effective with the 22. Okay, good.
That's correct. EL.
And the EL.
That'd be a coordinator two, correct.
Very good.
And before you vote on this board, I just do want to say thank you. I know you publicly don't hear that enough. I know our administrators are very supportive. So we appreciate, you know, everything that you've done and working with us. And so thank you for, in advance, for approving these contracts for them.
Any other questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes. Next, we have, just for discussion only, it, oh, it says action discussion, sorry. Correct. I see now. So we have another recommendation for approval for contract, administrator contract renewal. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Dr. Briggs? Ryan, will you call the roll?
Mr. Lopez?
Abstain.
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
We're presented the 2223 Athletic Handbook for our first reading and approval. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Wait a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions? Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Olszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Next, for discussion only, we have a job description for the first reading. Any questions?
Clarification, I was told that this is now current and accurate, that the new position will be entitled Executive Director of Academic Innovation and Instructional Technology. Is that correct? And that it will remain an executive director position?
Correct.
Okay.
We have to try to keep up with Whitehall, Brian.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I noticed, and Alicia, you've had eyes on this, right? Yeah, okay, great.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on. We've been presented information regarding 2223 school year trips. We also have the enhance, enhancing school meals for 2122. Question? No? And Dr. Briggs, we have Plan for Progress.
Yeah, board members, I'll be brief. I, I just wanted again to thank the board for the positions that we, we accepted tonight with our two security positions at the junior high levels. You approved those individuals this evening. I think it adds to a lot of the conversation that we had with school security, especially nowadays. Unfortunately, with the, with things that are happening throughout our country, we're receiving a lot of questions about what the next school year looks like and safety and security measures that we're putting in place for our buildings. And this is a big step. And the hiring of, of Mr. Ward, who will be starting with us July 1st, as a supervisor of security is going to be a big benefit for our school district. But also really taking a hard look at how we're currently using our current staff and making sure that we're utilizing our safety and security staff the way we need to. And I think it will look different going into next school year. And as we get closer to the school year, we will be presenting to the board what our plan looks like, what some of those things are put in place that will hopefully enhance the safety of our buildings. So our community obviously will be made aware of that as well. And we are in the process of planning that. We had to wait until Chris comes aboard. The two positions being approved tonight, and we'll be working very hard between now and the start of the school year to make sure that that's put in place. Because I know that's a question that a lot of you receive with everything that's happened. And, and unfortunately, you know, we're going to have to put some things in place that's going to have some non-negotiables when it comes to security in our buildings. And, and we're going to work hard to keep our kids and our staff safe. I know that's not aligned with the Plan for Progress, but it really is. It, it obviously focuses on facilities and focuses on our academic performance. But also the money that you've guys, that our district has chose to invest is appreciated. So thank you.
Any questions? Next, we have an update on our facilities bond issue. And I always feel like I keep calling you Ryan or anybody else Doc or something. So CFO Jenkins, would you go over that with us?
Thank you. I do have a couple of things I want to show briefly. Andy or Brian, whoever's driving, there's a document that I'd like you to show. And it's the year-over-year tax rates, Calc's whip, work in progress hypothetical. Have you showed that one first? Yeah, the, the one on, the second one down. Second one, up one, Bri. Yep. So the reason I brought this to your attention, the last time I showed you this, I committed my first error of the fiscal year and realized that I didn't take my Excel formula all the way down. So the effective mills that we're predicting right now for 2022 is 30.08. It's a 13.37% decrease in total millage. It doesn't change the fact that right now, we strongly believe that we'll be collecting six and a half mills versus seven. So again, that's passing a bond issue, but the bond issue millage dropping. So just wanted to show you that the 30.08, I believe before, was about 1.5 mills lower because my, I didn't take my formula down far enough. Still gives the same picture that millage is rolled back as property values increase.
We really have to dumb this down for the community. I mean, it's, I know you get it, but we need to super simplify what is happening. So anyway, not, not a slight against you at all, but we gotta keep it simple. Yeah.
I would just say, I believe that Mr. Jenkins receives requests for this kind of information all of the time.
I do. It's, it's both.
We need to have it prepared and ready for those that ask.
And we're, we're working on the more straightforward version. The next one, Bri, if you want to just grab it in list. So that one just simply shows a recalculation then of the tax bill. But it shows how a property could go up by 15% and ultimately the tax bill would nominally drop. This is assuming a 22% increase. Another property could go up by as much as 20%. And yet you would think, well, my taxes are going to go up 20%. They simply don't. They go up 3.96%. And then finally, a property going up 30%. Again, someone might think it's going to go up 30% and it goes up about 12.6. So this was just taking what happened on the first slide and reiterating it here. The next one, Brian. This shows a synopsis of why the no new millage works. And you can see the column to the far right would show that even collecting six and a half mills in the 2022, collect 23 tax year would allow our, it's amazing, our bond retirement fund balance to jump from 8.3 million to 10.0. The growth in the community is, is that dramatic? And our debt service, then you can see the issues are to the left, the bond fund balance is all the way out to the right. We will retire the 2,000 voted bond issue. That is the little bit that remains on, I think there's just a little bit of Tusing in that, and then there's North and Lakeview. Then the 2006 is a combination of two or three different refundings. If you wanted me to pull these apart, I certainly could. The 2022 hasn't happened yet. So that is what would be the preliminary. So that is what would be the preliminary. You can see when we calculated this, um, we were saying that we think it will go on at two point seven nine mills. The auditor certified two point eight. Um, but the magic of that far column is, is how we can say, we could actually pass a two point seven mil bond issue, and instead of seven plus two point seven, giving us nine point seven, it drops to six point five.
Because of the incorporation of the increased home value.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
The next one that I've added, and this is just a litany of things that I'm adding that we'll turn into, um, this just shows a graphical presentation of what I mean by as property values increase, tax rates decrease. The blue bars are the tax rate in mills, and that's the scale on the right. The orange line would be the tax rate per one hundred thousand dollars of home value. And this is just a simple fact that as property values increase, tax rates decrease. You'll see there was a mark drop from eighteen to nineteen. That was because in twenty nineteen, we had our last full reappraisal, and property values increased in the district about twenty-two percent. So you can see that mills dropped in that year, uh, by nearly seven mills, actually a little bit more than seven mills. The resulting rate, tax rate per one hundred thousand dollars of value dropped from fourteen ninety-nine forty-six to twelve forty-six thirty-two. The final exhibit, um, just shows what we anticipate happening with, uh, bond rates, same kind of graph. Only on this one, what I did was the blue represents what we need to collect in, uh, bond millage, and you can see that assuming the levy passes, we could drop to, to six and a half mills. And then the graph on the right shows the change in the bond tax rate in mills year by year. Um, so we have dropped in cumulative from twelve mills all the way to what we anticipate to be six and a half, uh, and yet we're still able to pay our debt service. That would be, and that, that six and a half would be even if this bond issue passes. Just a couple of things that I added. I tell Crystal all the time, anything I throw out there, um, I'm working with her to try to create a version that is a little more user-friendly than, yes, some of this stuff that's a little more, um, detailed. And that's all I have on the facilities and bond issue, unless there are questions.
Any questions? Then moving on to the public comments, do we have anybody who has any questions regarding anything we've discussed this evening? No? Um, board members, comments, questions? Hearing none. We have a recommendation to enter executive session. Her hire of is code one twenty-one point twenty-two G two to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ryan, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Neekamp?
Yes.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Mrs. Zilchewski?
Yes.
Mr. Postage?
Yes.
And we will once again return to open session.